North Kingstown School Committee Budget Work Session. Thank you for being so patient. We had a long executive session, so we're getting started late here. We are now going to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorraine, could you please call the roll?
Linda Avinzado.
Here.
John Baskarden.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Here.
Robert Jones.
Here.
William Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Julia Howell. Thank you. I will note for the record that Mr. Baskarden is still ill, unfortunately so. We sent him our good thoughts. Although we have other people who are exactly at their peak either here tonight, so thank you, Mary, for also coming here. All right, we are getting started with a presentation by Dr. Mansiri and Dr. Kenworthy.
Just to introduce everyone, at this time of year, actually, we're a little late on schedule right now because of the snow, but we present to you the changes to be proposed to the High School Program of Studies. And tonight, Dr. Kenworthy and Dr. Mansiri will walk us through a few of those details.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to let Dr. Mansiri do the heavy lifting, so to speak, and go over a lot of the details here regarding the Program of Studies. And then we're both, you know, we'll both be here for questions that we may be able to offer a different perspective on. Just a few things that I would ask you to keep in mind as Dr. Mansiri is going over the information, and I know you had a draft copy of the Program of Studies to look at before, you know, before this evening. One of the analogies that I always like to make about the Program of Studies is that it's like a menu. So, you know, we're getting into the time of year where students will be selecting courses for next year, so we'll do that with all of our current ninth through 11th graders who will be with us for next year. And then we'll also work with our middle school feeder schools on getting our incoming ninth graders enrolled. And, you know, the main document that they use will be the Program of Studies. And, you know, that'll be like their menu as they're making their different course selections. Now, as that process unfolds, the budget process will also be unfolding. And so, you know, I know later tonight, Dr. O'Jaye will be making, you know, the first of, you know, his budget proposals, which will start many conversations. So we will obviously tailor any of our offerings to make sure that they fit within whatever the final FTE allotment is that we get for the high school. So those two processes run somewhat simultaneously, and they don't quite match up timeline-wise, you know, but we will always work off of whatever the final FTE allotment is that we have at the end of the budget process. So just a couple of other things is, as students are making those selections and as Dr. Mansiri is going over some of the details, there's this kind of two things driving any student's course selection process, and that's the required courses that they need for graduation. And there are a number of those a student by the end of senior year needs. There are 24 specific credits that they have to have that are required courses. And then, you know, electives that they can choose from. And that usually, that'll increase, you know, if they're keeping up with all of their required courses for graduation, their elective choices will increase each year as they get into senior year. So, you know, I think it's important when you're looking at that document to understand too, you know, what's the required course for graduation and what's an elective that students can choose from. And the other thing that we do is, we have a process, we work with, you know, through our departments and our department chairs, and we do let teachers and departments propose new courses every year. One of the, you know, tenets that we try to stick to, and we've actually, I think in the time that I've been here, believe it or not, when you're looking at that document, you know, if a course doesn't run for a few years, you know, we get rid of it if students aren't signing up for it. And then as departments are proposing new courses, what we try to stick to is, you know, is there another course that they're willing to give up if there's a course that they really want to see run? Okay? So those are just some of the basic guiding principles we try to stick to, and I'll let Dr. Mansiri fill in a lot of the rest of the details.
Hi there, good evening. This is not very long, so we don't even need to, I don't know if you can even see that right now, but basically what I was going to talk about is the additions, any changes, and any questions that you have. And then notably, one of our largest additions was the STEM Engineering Program that we had this year. I'm not sure who's aware of it or not, and you must have been aware that in order to grant us the $10,000, but we were given a categorical grant from RYE, and it was $50,000. And with that, we ended up creating an engineering pathway. So in order to do that, you had to have three classes in a row that the students would come in and take. And there's a few things that we needed to organize in the school in order to make that happen. Last Tuesday, we just hosted the RYE, the gentlemen, and all the surrounding schools that are also involved in this categorical grant. So what we had to do is, we had to make sure we have our entry-level engineering class. We also had a CAD class, and we used to have a robotics class. And what we decided to do is we decided to bring those back, align them, and get the equipment that's necessary to go. So we've pretty much spent a lot of the money. We have a little bit left, and that's going to purchase the rest of the robotics equipment that we're going to need. So you'll see in the couple of pages that I just gave to you, at the front, I talked about our Charahoe School, but at the very top, it talks about North Kingstown creating this STEM Engineering Pathway. And it goes through a little bit of what we've bought. So that is in the Program of Studies. And then if you flip the page, just the graphic there, again, it's similar to the graphic on the screen. And basically, the students would come in from DMS, or from Jamestown, or from Wickford Middle School. They'd take the entry-level engineering class. And we're working with CCRI also on that, to make sure what we're doing is similar to what they'd either want at CCRI or URI. And then they can go into the CAD classes, or they can go into the robotics class, or they can do both, depending on what kind of electives they want. Barbara Jackson is working with us right now to help secure internships at the very end, so students that have completed the courses could go in and work with different companies. So that's in a work in progress right now. So I think that's the best. We're highlighting this because I think that that's really going to, I know that the middle schools right now are trying to grow their robotics program as well, and it'd be great feeder schools to bring them right up here. Our CAD class is currently always filled, as is our introduction to engineering class. So it just made sense to put those in together and to make sure our students could come in. And we're working with URI also to see if our students complete this, if they can give us any advice on what we could do to get them into a path going to URI. So that's the first one. The second thing is, is when we went down, we noticed this year, when we had the students coming into the guidance department if they're having trouble, that we didn't have as many ninth grade electives. So one of the criteria for anybody that was also going to propose a new elective was that the ninth graders had to be able to take the class. So it's everything that's added onto the page that I sent you back on January 9th, all of the new classes beyond like the AP Physics, things like that, but any new elective had to be able to be student-run as, I mean, ninth grade as well. So the introducing STEM through game development, and then the Spanish cinema, and anything else that came through had to be able, and also, a lot of the electives that used to be 10 through 12, the teachers opted to have them go down to the ninth grade. So we have a bigger offering for the ninth grade students coming in from Wickford and DMS and Jamestown. Okay. Is there any, you've had this document for a while, we had to cancel the School Committee last week. I don't know whether or not, I don't want to belabor the point and read this if you've already read through it. I've answered some emails that have come my way, so if there's any particular questions that you wanted to ask regarding the Program of Studies, I'd be happy to answer them for you right now.
Mrs. Clarkin.
Hi. Thanks. I looked through this, and, you know, it's amazing, all of the opportunities and courses that we offer to all the students. And, you know, we're adding new types of offerings. One question I have is, I didn't see a criteria in here or any language to the effect of how many minimum number of students we would have to have in a class before it would run. Is that something we include in here, so that students say, know that they may be able to sign up for a class, but if they don't have a certain number enrolled, we might not be able to provide that class?
Yes. Well, actually, Dr. O'Jaye always at the beginning of the year sets the number, so he usually says somewhere around 16 students need to be in the class. When the students come into the guidance department, whenever they're filling anything out, they have to meet with their guidance person that's connected with them, and they always tell them. So when we have a course that's notoriously low, and a student is in there, they also, at the very bottom of when they're filling things out, have to give a second choice, a third choice. And then what will happen is, if that course can't run immediately, like we have a framework right now of when things are going to happen. So right after February vacation, the students are going to get the Program of Studies, hopefully it gets approved, and I have the 10 days I can get it done. They get their Program of Studies, and then they are able to fill everything out. Once they fill it out after vacation, they hand it back in, they start meeting with their guidance counselors. And when they're meeting with their guidance counselors, they usually will tell them, this one, you know, you might have to make sure that you take a look here, because this one's not going to run or it will. And then the minute we get all of those into the database and we roll it, we see right away what numbers are. And probably like the first week of March, the middle of March, I give the first cuts to the teachers. So what we have currently running was, there was other things that were cut way before that, that won't run. So there definitely is. It's not in the Program of Studies, so to speak, but it's well aware with everybody that's doing it. And sometimes when you see a number that's lower, it's because there were two classes. They have the 10 days to be able to add and drop certain classes, and often what will happen is, something won't work out, they're in a math that's not correct for them, they have to go in, they determine that they need to be dropped, and they look around their schedule. And we try to make the least amount. So they're sitting there in English, let's say, their honors English class for a good five classes, and we can put them into another class easily, or we could change their entire schedule, and just to make it a better fit. And we try to do what's best for the student. And what's best for the student is to move them as easily as possible into another class.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can help in answering that particular question, Mrs. Clarkin, and I know other School Committee members have shared that kind of a concern. A few things guide that number, and Dr. Mansiri talked about my number of 16 as kind of a minimum. Generally speaking, that's the number that we've been using to look at as a cutoff point. And the reason we would choose that number is, contractually, there are some arrangements with teachers who teach five classes, that they would have a limit of 125 students assigned to them, and a maximum in any particular class of 28. So when you put all of that together, generally speaking, if you want to provide maximum efficiency and, you know, use the spaces in the classroom as well as we can, you're probably looking at an average of, you know, if everyone's at 125, generally it doesn't happen that way, but roughly an average of 25 per class. Once you get to, you know, the mid-teens at the very least, you start getting inefficient to make that average and to fill classes. That being said, there are some cases where we need to be cognizant of special circumstances. Part of the presentation I'm going to make tonight about the budget and staffing is designed to try to make it so that we don't have too many cases where, well, kids have committed to this line of coursework for some time now, and now there's only eight kids signed up for the class, and do we run it or not? You know, we prefer not to because of the efficiency issue, but we don't want to penalize the students who may have committed to, now they're in Portuguese IV, you see what I mean, and they've committed to all this coursework. So trying to minimize those kinds of situations. We're adding, what I like about, you know, these ads, and I've seen this for the last few years, it seems like we're getting more modern with our ads. There's some really nice, you know, e-commerce in here and very scientific kinds of courses. The addition of the engineering piece and robotics is really exciting. What we try to do upfront is to eliminate those things that just haven't been running. You know, every year, you look at the Program of Studies and certain things no one's been signing up for for years. So we clean that out. So we're not expanding the number of course selections. And then as Dr. Mansiri said, as soon as the kids sign up, and we notice there's a whole bunch of sections that just don't even have, reach that minimum enrollment, we generally clear all of those out, too. And we will never go over what the committee allotts us for FTEs. So we're going to be doing that work through the budget process, and so there will be a limited number of classes offered, and one way or another, we're going to have to make that fit. In terms of electives, that happens through student choice. So if not enough students choose it, it's more likely to be deleted from the list, won't make the final cut.
And if I could just expand on one thing that Dr. O'Jaye said. So I'm in my fourth year here as principal, and every year, you know, not one time have we had to go over that final FTE allotment, whatever it is. And, you know, I've never had to, in the summertime, go to Dr. O'Jaye and ask for an additional section of this. You know, we will make work whatever that final number is. And, you know, within that, you know, this process has to start off by giving the students the choice to see which courses it is that there's more demand for.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. So I know we added some electives, so can you tell us what electives we actually cut this year from the Program of Studies?
So far, desktop publishing.
So we've cut one.
Yeah.
But we added more than one, right?
Right. It looks like, yes.
So we're not really zero-summing?
No. At the beginning of this process, I didn't realize there was to be a zero-sum, but if that's the case, we can, really what we try to do is, we try to, again, put the demand out for the students. So I like it to be a democratic process with the students as far as electives go. So to be able to offer that. But what we can do is, you know, we do take a look back at the book and we remove things. For example, in English, we have mythology, two mythology classes, we run them every other year. So that's not all out there at once. So those are the things that we do, we maybe pull something back. I didn't put everything in here, just because I didn't realize that was, back in January 9th, that was something that you wanted to see, but I certainly can go ahead and put the things back in there that we're removing.
So I was also curious, too, something-
And, oh, can I, excuse me, I'm so sorry. As far as like the AP that's in here, the AP is not additional, it's just the, you know, the college board. So I don't want you to feel like, and the robotics was brought back because, in order to do this grant. So it does seem like it's really unbalanced, but in the end, it's not that as unbalanced as it appears from looking at this particular thing.
Well, and the robotics makes sense as part of the whole engineering pathway, but then I guess you start saying, you know, so if that's the direction we're moving, what are we not giving up? And I guess philosophically, the point is, I fully appreciate, we want to give a full menu.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, you all being, you know, sort of at the point of spirit, this realized the complexity you add by, with less enrollment, but continuing to add more choices, of then running into situations where you do run into, you know, we did run sections less than 16 this year. You know, a few of them. And so, right, and so you run into, you know, the process of either limiting the scope or being much more rigid in your process of when students can make a choice and when they get bumped out and all that. I'm curious, some things where we seem to be a lot different than the rest of the state. I couldn't find any other school that offers three PE electives. So I'm kind of curious, especially where one is a second version of the first course, you know, where other districts, for example, and I see, I know we do this with some courses, will offer the same course as both an honors and a college prep version, and let the teacher work out that difference. You know, why can't, for example, we do that with like Fit for Life, and just make one of the PE health classes an honors version where those Fit for Life advanced topics are incorporated into the PE health thing? I mean, because that was one of the sections that had low enrollment. It's what Barrington does, it's what a few other district does. Why isn't that an option to explore?
Within the, well, it certainly is an option to explore. I would never say that anything is closed. What I would say regarding that particular class is, that teacher has come to us a few times, and the space that it's currently in right now, when you have it, we're talking about safety, is that the very beginning, when they first start in that particular class, they all go into that particular weight room, and it's a large amount of students in a small space. So to have, to make sure that everybody is being careful and doing all the safety rules, you need to have a particular class in there. And then as you become more advanced, you can take it. So versus, we can't allow, we could call it whatever you want to call it, actually, but we can't allow to have certain kids in there without having all the safety precautions first. And then if they take it again, we can't call a class the same thing to take it again. So what we could do absolutely is call it something, and then say you can get honors or whatever, but it's a Fit for Life class, so you don't really say honors or CP.
Well, but I guess my point is, why can't we make PE Health 11 and PE Health 12 have an honors component where the Fit for Life topics are for those students who take the honor variant? Yeah. And not have, I mean, I just, maybe it's a philosophical point, but, you know, to take Fit for Life 2, you have to take Fit for Life 1. So that's almost 16% of your whole academic elective experience is in frankly something that, here has value, but in a relative value cost sense, you know, I would say maybe 16% of your electives in PE and health could be perhaps better distributed.
I get the point you're trying to make on that, just to answer your question, Mr. Jones, about why you can't just add the Fit for Life component to like PE 11 or 12. I think actually, I do remember seeing, in the Program of Studies itself, if you look under, for each year, you know, PE 9, PE 10, 11, and 12, there are specific state requirements that have to be covered in each of those years. The students here take PE and health for a semester, so I think those topics generally, you know, take the semester for them to cover. So, you know, are, and then you had mentioned-
Well, I know Barrington, Barrington offers it as, Barrington seems to offer, you know, within one of those, and I don't know if it's extra or something, but in your Program of Studies, they have it as, you know, here's, if you want a little more advanced stuff, you can sign up for it. And it's not an elective. I guess it's just as a question-
I'd have to look at how they're doing. I mean, sometimes the schools are doing the same kind of thing, they're just approaching it a little differently, you know, in the, and then you made the point about, well, you know, if a student's taking Fit for Life 1 and Fit for Life 2, and, you know, there's two of their elective credits, you know. Again, we try to, one of the great things about this school, and, you know, in the NEAS report that you'll get very soon, according to the timeline that we're on, you know, is our elective offering and the choices that students have to choose from. So students who are choosing those courses are doing so because it's where they're, you know, it's what they want to do and where their passion lies. And, you know, those account for elective credits, if they, you know, in order to get those, they have to have hit all of their other graduation requirements. So obviously, it's a different kid than would be choosing, you know, maybe, you know, AP Physics and AP Calculus, but it's what that particular group of students has their interest in. So that's where, that's kind of the history of where those courses have evolved from.
Yeah, and again, I'm sure we'd love to offer, you know, in each of some of these subjects, you know, a second variant if we could. I guess just my question is always, when we're, you know, way out of the norm of the rest of the state on something, you know, it's either, okay, we're really doing a great job in it, or you look at it and say, in the relative scheme of stuff, is this an area that, when we want to add robotics, and we want to add Spanish cinema, and we want to add some of these other things, this is an area that, you know, is nice, but in the relative balance, you know, again, I'm just maybe sort of questioning a second elective in Fit for Life. I get, if I was in high school and had that, I might have signed up for that. But, you know, in the relative scheme of balancing stuff, you know, it seems like we haven't cut as much as we've added. And so I'm just throwing it out there, you know, is this an area we can look at and say, you know, is it really, really necessary?
Yeah. And again, and I promise you, as Dr. Mansiri said, this process started, you know, in December, when I think you received your original information, we're going to go back through this one more time for it goes to print. There will probably be more courses that, you know, we'll definitely take a harder look at and pull out, you know, given the conversations that we've all had recently over the last few weeks. So what you might see there with Fit for Life or Wellness, which is the other PE elective, is we may end up offering less sections of them. Both of those PE electives right now have multiple sections. And, you know, maybe it'll be one section of each as, you know, students pass, filter into some of the other choices that are there in the Program of Studies.
I can just add one point, too. Mr. Jones, your points are good ones. I mean, we, I do feel the need to start with less, okay? It makes for less or fewer situations, excuse me, in which we have to tell students, you didn't get your first choice, and now we have to do some consolidating. But I just want to clarify one thing, I think we're getting a little off task on this point, that there is a final sum number of courses that we run. We will not exceed that, and that number will go down significantly, just with my proposal, if not with other suggestions from the committee over the next few weeks and months. But also, you know, the point about Fit for Life, I agree with you on a lot of the points, but I just want to put it in perspective, too. We run dozens of physical fitness or PE classes, Fit for Life is a few of them, and only one that I counted had an unusually low number of students in it. And I'm suggesting to reduce by .2 in PE, that's one of my cuts. So, you know, I get that. You know, the other sections have, you know, adequate enrollment in terms of the model that we're trying to set up. So I'll leave it there.
The final question I had was on the internships. I noticed we said we're going to make it a .5 credit. Is it possible that we can have a longer range, like from .5 to two credits, depending on how you all end up? I just don't want to constrain the possibility that internships might offer more than just .5 credits, you know, based on how you start restructuring some of those experiential learning stuff.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's an area, and, you know, we've had conversations about that. I mean, I definitely see that area expanding, you know, as we move forward in the future and things that we want to offer and ways that we want to deliver them. So right now, the .5 credit for internship is per semester. So we will have some students who will take an internship in both semesters and would get one credit combined for it.
Okay.
So right now, that would be the max. You know, the other thing with internships to keep in mind, in the way that they're currently structured, is that they're only offered to seniors, you know, obviously, there's a drive, you know, students need to be able to leave campus and driving component of it, but two seniors who are on track to graduate. So, you know, in order to sign up for the elective, either first or second semester, you know, we go through with them and verify that they have all their other required courses, you know, e-portfolio, where they need to be for senior project, depending on, you know, where it is in the year and that kind of thing. So because, you know, we don't want students, although it's a great experience, to also be doing the internship and pulling them out of school if there are other things that, you know, they need to make sure that they hit for their required courses here.
Thank you.
Mr. Susan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank both of you for coming out tonight and presenting the course of studies and Program of Studies. And I know you've fielded a lot of questions and emails over the last several weeks, so I appreciate that as well. I think, just to be really brief, you know, the Program of Studies that we offer is very extensive, and that's a good thing. You know, that's what makes North Kingstown High School such a great high school. So it's a great thing to have this large menu of Program of Studies and different opportunities and selections out there for the students. For, I think for us as a committee, it's, you know, we're obviously dealing with the competing need of resources in each school and each level throughout the district, and trying to deploy those resources as efficiently as we possibly can to try to meet everyone's needs. Part of my concern is, as you know, if you're at a private college, for example, and there's a course that's in the menu, and enough people don't sign up for that course, where it's not financially or even educationally feasible to run that course, it doesn't run. You got to pick something else. And kind of what you guys have laid out is that if enough students don't sign up, it's not financially feasible or educationally feasible to run the course, it doesn't run. I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues, you know, is, and I share the same thoughts and concerns as, going back predating you, you know, we've seen and heard the, well, the classes aren't going to run unless we get X amount of numbers. Yet, you know, we have seen these classes run in the past without having X amount of number enrolled in the class. So I guess that's where our, I think where the hesitation or the concern is, is the assurance is that we're not going to run a class with five kids, nine kids, 15 kids. And I think offering- kids, fifteen kids. And I think offering, or consolidating some of these things on this menu, kind of, I mean, you don't want to lessen the choices, but you actually are lessing the choices, and you're basically, I think it's making things less complicated when you don't offer things that you know traditionally haven't ran or are not going to run, whether it be for, you know, curriculum changes, budgetary changes, whatever they may be. As, we'd like to put a big menu out there, but at the same time, we don't want to complicate things or make the process even more difficult when we know that there are things on that menu that we're not going to be able to provide. So, you know, I would defer to you as the educational professionals to make the recommendations to say, okay, you know, we'd like to have, you know, all of this. We all would like to have all of this. But in the case of needing to reduce, obviously, you would reduce in the areas where you get the lowest, historically have had the lowest interest, student interest. So, you know, I know the committee's already had some discussion as far as areas that they'd like to see less of and offer. And I think obviously, those decisions and discussions are driven by the budget, you know, and that's what it all comes down to. So I think it may be helpful, you know, you may not feel necessary, but I think it may be helpful to have some type of statement, maybe in the first couple of pages of the program of studies, making it clear. And I'm sure that when it's presented to the middle schoolers, that it is presented to them as, all of this may not run. So, you know, you have your second and third choices. But I think that might be helpful to have a note in the first couple of pages.
Absolutely. We can add that. And that's the whole reason why we didn't put it to print yet. So I think that's a great idea. We can put that in there. I just want to add that, and I'm sure you know this as well, it would be ideal if we could take the number of students at the high school and divide it by twenty-five, and that would be perfect. But I think we all know that that necessarily can never be the case.
Right.
It's unfortunate that we had a couple of classes with such small numbers in there. And I, you know, I really hope that we can guarantee to you that that won't happen again. But I do want you to know that there are going to be some classes with a little, it's fluid. So, and there are kids, and we want to make sure that we give them opportunities. And I think we'll, you know, take everybody's considerations into, you know, when we're going back and taking one last look at that. And I want you to know that I hear everything you're saying. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merg, and Mrs. Avanzato.
Excuse me?
I said, Mr. Merg, and Mrs. Avanzato.
I missed a couple of things along the line. What do the kids have to complete and have all their inputs in for the program of studies? In other words?
They're going to be, they're going to be getting the book right after February vacation, and then they have that week to fill it out. They have to bring it into their English teachers on that Friday.
So by March, you pretty well know what the kids' selections are and so forth and so on?
Yeah, it takes a pretty, well, yeah, it takes a few weeks for them to meet with their English teachers. But yes, pretty much by the middle of March, things will be starting to get inputted, and then we have to, go ahead, what else were you going to ask?
So then you have a pretty good idea then of what your courses are going to be the following year then. See, I'm looking at it from a budgetary standpoint as well, okay, and how these things link together. And so, you know, in the March timeframe, you should have a pretty good idea of the class you're going to run, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, we, then we go to the middle schools, and then we meet with the middle schools as well. So they are also doing it. So we have, I don't, how many, whatever, three hundred more kids that are coming in?
I, so.
Three fifty that will come in. So somewhere in the middle of March, then we, so we take care of the high school, that we do that for ten, the ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. And then once we've done that, then we go to, I meet with the middle school teachers, and we do the same thing over again.
Do you have like a schedule you can see? In other words?
Yeah, I can, I have a little framework that I send out to the guidance.
And then at what point in time do you kind of lock the kids into their scheduling?
I'd say the middle of April, it's locked in.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Give you a real tough one.
Okay.
How about a four-year, okay, schedule?
So you want the students, when they come in their freshman year?
Have a four-year program of studies that they sign up for and the parents sign up for.
Absolutely not.
Excuse me?
Absolutely not.
Why not?
I'm just looking at Christian's face over here as the only student who is here.
I was just going to say.
That's kind of one of the issues here. In other words, but, you know, we ought to be framed to some degree, okay, in where we hope we're going through the process. It could be engineering, it could be, you know, uh, general studies.
I think you have to look at the transfer students at the college level. I think even students at the college level don't even know half the time what they want to do. But I would say this, we basically know what they're going to take for their core courses when they come in. So we have an idea, that's why the core courses are always filled. It's just the elective courses that you never know.
Again, the, also, the twenty-four credits that kids have to have.
Yes.
Well, couldn't we have that scheduled for four years?
I mean, we give an ideal. We do, when you open up the program of studies, it says, if you're looking, this is like a pathway that you could do. We give ideals about what you could take, but we never say, what we say elective, six-point-five electives. We don't say, okay, oh, you, you know, you looked like you wanted to do art. You got six-point-five art.
You could lock in your mandatory twenty-four credits, though, right?
The fact that they have to have the mandatory credits is locked in. And basically, they have a period, seven-period schedule, so they're going to be assigned twenty-eight classes over four years. We know that for certain. So that's our finite number. But obviously, year by year, situation by situation, what kids pass, what they don't pass, may determine if they're in an honor section or a college prep section, if they have special needs, you know, all kinds of factors go in year by year. You know, ultimately, it's not necessarily about, oh, you know, as much as I would like it sometimes to be, about the ease of scheduling, but about the kids and what they need on a year-by-year basis. So obviously, there's got to be some flexibility year by year to give them these options.
I was going to say, I had one son who came in his one English, and then he bumped up to another English the next year. And I had another son who, you know, flopped around in the histories. And I have one son who was, if he told, asked him his freshman year what Matthew was going to take, he would have told you calculus. And now he's saying, no, no, statistics. So they really could go all over the place.
Yeah, again, that's, I guess, part of the problem when you're trying to have such a robust, robust number of choices.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, that's what I'm really kind of driving at, is how far and how robust can these changes be, or the course offerings be, and still provide, you know, really the core basics that you need to have for the kids. And to keep keeping, you know, additional new technologies like the STEM program coming, which I think is, you know, tremendous. Now, see, to my way of thinking, the STEM program is one that should be bing, 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 bing. This is what you need. You need this, because you've already outlined it practically. I believe on your chart here, right?
Right, yeah.
So that should be a four-year program for a student.
For some, sure.
Well, for anybody who wants to sign up for it.
Yeah.
So if you're signing up for a four-year program, you know, you could actually almost have the classes aligned for four years.
Right. That one, you're right. Those kids will know what they want to do. But I can't imagine the students that are working on the musical right now would be happy if I told them they were taking the STEM for four years, if they wanted to go, you know, drama and theater and fine arts. So. But maybe we can give something. Here's a thought. What if we say, if you're interested in, we could add pages, not this year, but we could do something for the years coming, that said, if you're interested in fine arts, this would be the path. If you're interested in, if that was something that you wanted to see, we could propose something like that. I just can't do it for today.
Sure, I understand. But even, for example, you know, way back when, when Mr. McKay and I went to school, okay, there was, there were maybe three choices, yeah, and I'm only kidding, Kelly, you know, is that you, and this is really going way back in the fifties. You had college, you had business, and agriculture, by the way, okay, and there's another general course, okay? And you basically elected to go, if your parents, you know, felt you were going to school, they zeroed you in to take the courses to make sure, when you got out of the end, okay, you had the courses to go to college, okay? And that's what I, I'm kind of looking at as well here, is to make sure that we're on this trend, you know, that the kids know. But I also understand that as you go along, they're going to have some, you know, they've got to get from here to there, but that some kids may have higher-level classes or lower levels depending upon the skills. But there still should be a plan that says, this is your minimum requirements, if you want to go to URI or Brown or whatever.
All right, I'm going to ask Mrs. Avanzato, because we really do need to get to our budget tonight. Our budget presenter is, needs to present sooner than later. So, Mrs. Avanzato, very briefly.
Thank you very much. Good presentation. I concur with some of the comments made, and we appreciate any efforts you guys make to identify the sections that traditionally have run without a lot of students and, you know, call those if you can. And one thing I was wondering, in terms of like online learning, which I guess isn't a particular course, but it spans all the courses, that's not something that's really contained in the program of studies, is?
No. Right now, we have a program, it's called Edgenuity, and we also allow students to take classes, let's say, at a college level online. And the reason for that is we have certain language with the teachers and contractual language. And what happens is we can use it for a remediation only. We don't use it in lieu of a class. We use it if a student right now, so we're at the semester, and if it's a student that mathematically no way can pass a class, and they're a senior, we will use it to go ahead and go back and remediate the first semester, so get them back on track, so that they can then pass the class.
I would be interested in further discussion at another time of online use for kids that are out ill, you know, earlier on. So, because we have a problem with tutors a lot of times.
Right.
You know, it's difficult to get them. We get them, it's kind of spotty. I think we need to really take advantage of that technology, because a kid who doesn't know, you don't know how long the child's going to be out with some kind of illness that's unclear or isn't diagnosed yet, or is Lyme, or is something like that. And we've been discussing this in the Wellness Committee, so I would like to talk about that in the future. We need to shorten the number of days before tutors kick in, and part of that might be working on some online options for those kids.
And also, just to, for your point, for your Wellness Committee, we did work with Rich Booth to get a Wi-Fi upstairs in the World Languages for a student that was out medically and to do FaceTime. So that was another opportunity to be able to do. And then she was so ill that she couldn't make it. But it doesn't matter, like, that's another thing. So we're very open to looking at other areas. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any citizens' comments? All right, so, moving on to our routine items, executive session. Do I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes from January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen?
The move? Second?
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All those opposed, abstentions?
Approve.
You don't need to disclose any executive session votes, correct?
Correct.
All right. Dr. Oje had a few comments that you wanted to make.
Just very briefly, we have a lot to do tonight with the budget. But, you know, I wanted to take a moment tonight, as all of you are aware, this week in one of our local papers and on the patch, you know, the media got notice from the head of our, of the North Kingstown Teachers Union, Kevin Dubois, about a vote of no confidence in Dr. Bezulo and Mrs. Perry, the head of and assistant head of special education in our district. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on this tonight, but I just want to say, you know, that I feel absolutely terrible about this situation. I'm very disappointed that Mr. Dubois chose this path. These are events that had, or at least the notice to the media is based on events that happened over the summer and early in September. They have been resolved, to my knowledge. I've been personally involved in a number of meetings that were very cordial and productive. And I feel that his choice to release that information at this point was not helpful to our communications with our teachers' union in any way. And I just want to, you know, extend my, my opinion that I feel, you know, Dr. Bezulo and Mrs. Perry have been doing tremendous work for this district. They've taken on two major initiatives in these past couple of years. One is reorganizing our special ed services to ultimately take place of behavioral services at the Davisville Building. That plan is going exceptionally well, and we are servicing our kids better because of it, and we are saving the district a lot of money because of it. The other is the moves that are being made at several levels, particularly at the high school, to address needs about highly-qualified instruction. And that means to have all students as much as possible in front of teachers who are highly qualified in this subject area. That was an area that we were not doing well on. We were told that in a ride review. Dr. Bezulo and Mrs. Perry got out in front of that issue and addressed it. It was not easy. The decisions were difficult because they were not the practices that we were used to doing in this district. And that was a cause of a lot of concern for people. But it takes a lot of courage to take those kinds of things on and to make them right. And they have done that, and I very much appreciate that. I have talked to our chair and vice chair about possibly having this as an agenda item on our committee meeting next week. And I have nothing further to add at this time, but I will talk some more about it next week. Thank you.
Mr. Sucey, you're the liaison to CILAC.
Yeah, I'd just make one very quick and brief comment. As Dr. Oje mentioned, this is something that we have briefly discussed, and it will be an agenda topic at our next meeting a week from tonight, so we can certainly dive into that discussion a little bit deeper when it actually is an agenda item for us. But very briefly echo some of what Dr. Oje said. You know, very happy with our special education leadership, doing a lot of the hard work. And can we improve? Sure we can. You can always improve in every area. You should never be satisfied or feel that you've, and so, you know, we continue to work in those areas, and we have excellent leadership. Very confident in our leadership. Like I said, we can definitely get a little bit further into this discussion next week. And disappointed to say the least in the union leadership and the approach that they've decided to take. I know it's not a representative of how the many good teachers that we have in this district feel and how they work every day, but it is reflected poorly on the group and on the district as a whole. So we'll certainly continue this discussion next week. Thank you.
It is on our agenda for next week. So, all right, that brings us to item B, approval of the program of studies. Do I have a motion? Mr. Sucey?
What I'd do with you, I'd like to do, if there's no objection from the committee, is maybe we should have the budget discussion first and possibly revisit this agenda topic at the end of tonight's meeting. And if the committee feels as though that they're ready to vote on it tonight, we could certainly vote on it at that time. I think that some of the budget discussion that we have tonight may answer a lot of the questions that we have regarding the program of studies, or may weed out a lot of the concerns we have with the program of studies. So maybe we have this budget discussion first, and we get back to the agenda topic at the conclusion of tonight's budget discussion.
I'm perfectly fine with that approach. I just want to remind people that if we could do it tonight, and there may be a few more items that, you know, either come into play or get deleted after tonight, but we can make those adjustments as time goes on. The problem is, we need to go to print these, you know, so we can't wait another week. We already got affected by the snowstorm because of that.
Like I said, I think the budget discussion will answer a lot of the questions that people may have regarding the program of studies. So.
All right, and let's jump right to the budget discussion. We'll come back to do personnel items later.
Thank you. I'm going to allow Mrs. King. I really appreciate the fact that you are here this evening. I know you're feeling under the weather, and it's been hitting you hard lately. And so I really appreciate your taking the time to be here tonight. Nobody knows this budget more inside and out than you do. Nobody knows this budget more inside and out than you do. And I'm going to let you begin by talking about kind of the nuts and bolts, the major numbers that are driving this budget, and then I will have a number of comments to follow up.
Thank you. I'll start out with the format of the budget, which is primarily the same as last year. The one area that we did add that is not quite complete yet was Mr. Jones's summary information by school. He had a lot of information, sort of a snapshot by each school. I've spoken to him about some of this information and those worksheets will continue to get updated as we move forward. And as last year, the executive summary will be provided to you at the end, once the budget is pretty close to final. Again, all the tabs, all of the information is the same as last year, the format's the same, so you'll see the same schedules as you did last year. I'm going to take you to the tab that's noted, revenue expenditure, revenue and expenditure info. That's really, the page 19 is really the big piece of information that you, actually, let's go to page 20, that really shows where we are compared, where our budget is compared to where we are right now. I will say that there have already been changes since this budget went out. I guess that's what happens when it snows and we have to cancel a meeting. But a couple of items, this budget that's in front of you right now is showing a net overall change year over year of about two and a half percent in the general fund. So I want to remind you that we started, we will start FY '15 with a $228,000 structural deficit. And I don't know if anyone can remember back to the payroll account that was adjusted to fund balance and that number in fund balance was then brought into our FY '14 budget for salaries. So that's the, that's a big item that I think everybody has to understand, that we're starting off the bat, right off the bat with a $228,000 number that we made up from fund balance for FY '14. I think that's very important to note.
Does that include all of it? Under what constitutes the fund balance, is it a specific issue or just other issues?
The $228,000 adjustment was made from the payroll account and it went directly to fund balance because it was from prior years, it was a prior year adjustment. We reallocated those funds to the FY '14 budget for shortfalls that we did not get in our revenue numbers.
Thank you.
So this budget right now is showing, the state number is off. So right, right off the bat, our state number is off by about $26,000. The number that we got from the governor, I'm showing $10,740, $10,740,000 in state aid and it's actually going to be about $26,000 less than that compared to what the governor has just recently proposed. So unfortunately, right off the bat, we need to find $26,000 on our state aid number. Where's that number, Mary? I'm sorry. Page? Actually, I'm back to page 19, Linda, sorry about that.
On the revenues? That's okay. I figured it was on the revenue.
Yeah, the state aid number.
At the top there, yeah.
Yep.
Second one from the top, yep.
And we are reflecting a, in this number, which again, has been adjusted by, will continue to get adjusted, we're reflecting a 3.57% increase in town funding.
Now, we're on page 20.
Sorry, I'm jumping all over the place between those two pages.
I see it, second line, town funding for local taxes.
The primary drivers this year are the same as last year. We have changes in salaries. This number, this salary number reflects some FTE increases that Dr. Ojai is going to indicate have changed. We did enjoy quite a bit of savings in the healthcare line item, so that's really helping us this year. That number is not quite final yet either. I don't have the final premiums from the trust on that. But basically, it's always the same drivers, salaries and benefits. Pension numbers have changed somewhat, not a lot from year to year, but again, if salaries increase, your pensions increase. There really isn't anything else in this budget that's dramatically different except for any of the staffing issues that Dr. Ojai will talk about.
Thank you. I want to, I want to talk a few minutes about, you know, some of the long-term issues that I feel we are facing as a district and, and what I would like to use these next few meetings that we've talked about the budget as part of our focus. As Mrs. King indicated to you, you know, the year-by-year piece here is, I'm not necessarily looking to add anything dramatically new, other than, as you already know, the Davisville Academy, which we've had a lot of discussion about and I'm going to include that in some of my staffing points. But, you know, so the, the traditional drivers of the budget are what accounts for the ads and the operational. What I'd like to focus on, and something that doesn't necessarily get as much focus during budget season, are some long-term items that I would like to use the next few meetings to become a lot more specific types of items. The first of which is the Davisville Academy. As I mentioned in my comments about Dr. Pizzullo, this has been a move that we have been looking to make for well over a year now and we're getting to a point where we're getting bids and we will be in front of this committee and the town council to present to you what we have in mind, very specifically, and the money that it would take, the funding that it would take to get us there. We're, we've, between those two groups, there's a commitment already of 1.2 million to update the building, to be ready to receive our, our services, special education services for our behavioral students K through 12, and to house our special education offices in that building as well. This is a move that is very much needed for a couple of reasons. One, it helps us to service these students better. In some cases, we've had ALP programs in the schools that we have not felt very comfortable with. In other cases, we've had students who have gone to out-of-district placements at exorbitant costs, starting at $46,000 per student and up. And we feel we can, we have, we've already done so and we will continue to do so, bring students back to the district, saving that money and using that money toward the staff that it would take to service them better here in the district, better communication with our schools in the district, better opportunities to transition back into the regular schools if, you know, if and when it is possible. And, you know, ultimately, it's something to, to do this work much more efficiently. Many districts are starting to look at these kinds of options for their students and we've already started to receive some phone calls about other students interested in tuitioning students into the Davisville Academy. So, and I would project that in years to come, as we get more stabilized in that program, that we'll see even more of that kind of possibilities for actual tuitions coming into the district for the program. So, there's a lot of good things about that program. The second item I'd like to focus on is capital funding for building infrastructure. This is something that we talk about a lot as a committee and with the town council and, you know, over the last few years of my superintendency, you know, I've seen the work going, $6.4 million going into a bond and all the work that that takes. And I received a lot of criticism early on when that bond was approved from citizens in the community saying, why are you always asking for bonds? And isn't there a better way of doing this? And, and I believe at certain points that it is important to go out for bonds, but I also believe there is, we have a responsibility to have some kind of fund that transcends the year-by-year decisions of our committees at budget time. That we make a commitment based on some type of metric about, you know, building maintenance, you know, norms in our state and in our country, about, you know, the kind of money that we would need to set aside to make sure we are maintaining our buildings well. That we don't run into situations where we start having a real problem with a roof or our other issues in a building, where now we have to spend years of organizing a bond to address something that people have known has been a problem for years before that. It just doesn't seem like the appropriate way of addressing those kinds of issues. So I, I believe some kind of conversation needs to be had about getting to the point that we, we have that kind of collective commitment in our community. Third is a similar type of program with technology in mind. This district just received almost $700,000 in state money to provide a wireless infrastructure to our schools. And that's step one. That'll be a great resource for our teachers and our students to have online IT informational tools to help in their learning. It is the way our culture is communicating, our business world is communicating, our students are currently communicating in just about everywhere, including the school, by the way, already, but not nearly to the extent that it could be used and, and to the extent that it could really enhance the teaching and learning opportunities that are in this district. So, this is the first step to get the wireless infrastructure. The next step is, we've, we've committed to a study, we're getting information back already from that study, it looks very good, I'm very impressed with the people who are doing it, and, and that will be in front of this committee before too long and as well as the town council to talk about, you know, where is our community in terms of what kind of long-term strategic plan around technology we would like to have. Regardless of what the results of that is, and I'm not necessarily particularly wedded myself to say it's got to be a one-to-one initiative that looks exactly like this. If something like that turns out, fine, but it's going to be a collective commitment. I will be involved, of course, our, our administration, our teachers, our students, our whole community and of course, the school committee and town council will be involved as well. But one thing I know for sure, that it will require resources to fund it and to maintain it. I would hate to put together some kind of one-time, major initiative to put a lot of funds behind a technology purchase, only to see it get old very fast in a few years and not have the resources to maintain that commitment that we've initially made. So, again, I think that's something that a long-term commitment needs to address, that regardless of budget cycles, that there is a commitment to continually update whatever we decide on for technology, whether it's a slow path or a fast path, or kids are taking one-to-one items home or not, that we have the resources and we know that when we purchase it now, that we're going to be able to maintain it five and 10 years down the road and keep it up to date. As we all know, technology is like moving so fast that, you know, a cellphone that you have now, three years from now, seems completely obsolete or needs to be replaced. So, that's item number three. The fourth item I'd like to talk about is a long-term North Kingstown Schools consolidation study. And that would be some kind of a joint venture, school committee, town council, community members who are involved in a task force to study the long-term trends of this district. In other words, where will we be? What is the best thinking in terms of what our enrollment will look like 10, 15 years down the road? How do we prepare for that? Right now, we have basically nine school buildings, central office, we have the D building and some of them are very old, some of them are not so efficient in terms of the way they use heat and, and their resources. We could do a lot better with the kinds of buildings we have, we could do a lot better with the kinds of properties that we have and how we use the current properties that we have. We may not need them all, long-term down the road. Right now, I think we're better positioned than most communities in the state. You've seen recently in the news, a big debate in West, in Warwick about closing Veterans High School because of low enrollment, not using the school to its capacity. Our schools are used to their capacity right now, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't do this with fewer schools. And that we couldn't, and I don't necessarily mean just getting rid of some, but possibly adding something that's more fuel-efficient and getting rid of something that seems ancient at this point and certainly is not serving our needs well. Again, that is not something that I think we're going to solve during this budget season or, you know, and it's not something that's going to happen starting in September. But I, I would like to get the conversation started. What kinds of models are out there where we can really focus on saving a lot of funds that are, we know we're going to need? This budget process doesn't get easier every year, it gets harder every year. And so we know we're going to be facing these, these issues and we know we're going to need educational services in our community for a long time to come. So I think it's important to be prepared for that, that long haul. So I'm, I'm asking for the committee to work with the town council and perhaps to have some kind of collective commitment of, say, $50,000 or so to begin the conversation, to, to get a task force going, conduct a study that we can base some kind of a long-term proposal that may, at some point, end up as a, as a bond question down the road. But I think, I think that is a conversation that needs to happen. So, going into tonight, everybody, I know that we've set aside a number of meetings to talk about the budget and I think that's a wise thing to do. I'm certainly not asking you to approve my proposal tonight. I would like to talk a little bit about a major driver for the budget in terms of staffing and my approach to that with you, and I'll, I'll spend a few minutes talking about that. I'm also very interested in hearing from all of you tonight and I appreciate the phone calls and the emails that I've gotten and the meetings that I've had with many of you already, to talk to me about what your concerns are. So I can, I can be prepared with that, I can queue these things up for you at our next meetings and, and make sure that you're getting the information that you need and, and that I am being cognizant to address the kinds of issues you would like me to address. So in looking at staffing, my proposal to you with this budget in mind is that our staffing would not, would be budget neutral, basically.
And this is all on a sheet that was sitting on your table? If you're, if you're looking for that particular sheet, it was on the table underneath your agenda.
I apologize to the members of the audience who may not have this in front of you, but I will go into some detail and, and we will have this out on the webpage very, very soon.
Sure.
So one of the things tonight that the committee should know is that basically, our normal tech people who come to tear down the equipment and everything for tonight are not going to be able to be here. So Christian's deadline for, or as I say, the time where he has to go home is 10. So in order for him to be able to pack everything up, we have to adjourn at 9:45. That is approximately in one hour. If anything, it's less than an hour right now. So what we might want to think about doing, since we do meet next week and the following week, is as Dr. Ojai goes through this tonight, because we have a couple other voting items, we have a policy that needs to be voted on, Department of Education is asking us to vote on this before the end of January, is that we do a lot of listening tonight, we write down a lot of questions, we pass them on to the superintendent and so next time that we meet, we can do much more of our questioning and that sort of thing, so that we'll be able to get through the things we need to do tonight because we still have our, our discussion on the program of studies too. All right?
I'll try to be brief with this because I know there'll be a lot of need for people to comment and to have questions. Basically, the list that you see in front of you has an equal number of additions and adds, so there's basically taking the current staff that we have now and making, and doing some transferring. Because of enrollment and where the kids are at a current year, and this happens every year, by the way, everybody, that we look at, you know, where the current needs are. For enrollment purposes, I'm looking at that we would need one less teacher at the middle school level, at Davisville Middle School, that we would be able to reduce by one special education teacher at North Kingstown High School, an elementary teacher at Forest Park. On top of the, the reduction of 1.0 special ed at the high school, I'm also looking at general electives, the things we talked about tonight, those things that do not run, that we would be looking at point eight reduction in those, and that's based on the staffing analysis that you have all seen. We are also looking for an earlier plan to reduce the electronic portfolio, that we would be able to reduce by another point two there. We are looking at the reduction of a teacher assistant with Mrs. Seronin retiring. We're looking at a different design for the hiring of that assistant principal to include some guidance in, in special education at the high school. That would allow our LEA at the high school to service the middle schools as well and lessen the need to some extent. lessen the need, to some extent, for a teaching assistant to help with that work, because we would send some of that work to our current clerks at the high school. And that would allow for a reduction in .5 FTEs for teaching assistants. One item that I'm looking at taking on this year is that, after much thought, that I feel it is important for the points that we made tonight about budget, that we currently have four foreign languages being offered at North Kingston High School, that is more than any other high school in the state of Rhode Island, and I am proposing that we move to three. We currently have Spanish, which is our highest enrolled, we also have Portuguese, German, and French. Because of the similarity between Portuguese and Spanish, I know they're not completely similar, but based on the choices that I have, I think for the greatest diversity, that we continue with Spanish, French, and German. This would not affect any student who is currently taking Portuguese at the high school. They will be able to continue with their course of studies in that subject, even to the honors level. What it would mean would be a reduction of the two sections that we have of freshman Portuguese, it wouldn't even be something that Dr. Manzieri would go to the middle schools and tell students they even have an option for. So, that would, that's part of the spirit of the discussion we just had. If they don't have the option going in, we don't have to worry about being disappointing with people down the road when things don't get enrolled as much. That wouldn't require a .4 reduction of the two classes, because those students are more than likely going to still take a foreign language. My guess, and this is just, you know, not necessarily based on intense research, but my years of working with this, is that I would anticipate at least half of those students would probably gravitate to Spanish, and the other half would probably fill in a freshman section that, right now, is not enrolled enough, in my opinion, in either French or German. So, that would allow us to have a .2 reduction in foreign language, and as the years go on, it would allow us to continue with another .2 or .4 each year for the next three or four years until no students are taking Portuguese and more students are taking the three other subjects. We could still boast that we have as many foreign language topics as any other high school in the state of Rhode Island, and it would still be a complement to the kinds of programming that we are trying to encourage our students. Obviously, awareness of other cultures is great. We also have a connection to, you know, German and French and Spanish, which are all part of the International Engineering Program at URI, which we're trying to do some partnering with through our career and technical center aspirations. So, I don't see it hurting us in that respect. As I mentioned earlier, I'm looking, based on enrollment, looking at at least one course that certainly didn't get the enrollment it should've gotten in physical education, that we would drop that by a .2 as well. So, the high school definitely gets a lot of love from Dr. Ogier this year in terms of the number of reductions that I would be looking to include. But I do believe it is something that we can absorb, and I appreciate the work that Dr. Kenworthy and Dr. Manzieri have done, not only this year, but in past years, to work with me and work with the committee to be very flexible in looking at the options that they have when budget-cutting time comes around. In terms of things to be added, we are in desperate need of assistance, particularly with the new healthcare plan that we have for another clerk, or not, it's an analyst, excuse me, in the admin building to work with Mrs. King to help in terms of payroll and in terms of maintaining the new healthcare benefits program, which is a very different item than what we are used to and needs a lot more maintenance from central office. We are looking to add a pre-K coordinator. Right now, we outsource for some of those services to conduct over 400 meetings that happen a year. I don't think people realize the extent that we provide pre-K services in special education, and Dr. Brazillo is here tonight if anyone would like to speak with her about that. But there's a lot of work, and it's a growing program, and it is a mandatory program per state mandate. So, we are in desperate need of someone to oversee that. That is an item that does not affect the operational budget, we can handle that through grant money. We're looking at the need for special education services for a teaching assistant at Stony Lane and another teaching assistant at Forest Park. We're looking to add robotics at the middle school level at Wickford. I believe that is something that we can absorb with the current staff. I believe that in our workshop area, it would be a good place for it, and I believe we have a teacher there who is ready to take that on as half of his workload. I don't believe the dynamics are quite the same at Davisville. I believe there's more of a need for elective choices at Davisville, and not necessarily the choices, but the staffing to take care of the choices. Mrs. Logan has gotten to a point where she is utilizing core staff, four out of five of their classes, and because of the need that students have to have two of their seven as electives, that we may use a really good math teacher, not for all of their math courses, but to go and teach something like career skills or something that isn't necessarily what they're there to do, but is to provide an elective choice. I think we have a responsibility to provide, you know, meaningful elective choices, and in this case, an elective choice that will help us to create an interest and a buzz to feed into that career and tech program that we're trying to build at the high school. When we talked to RIDE about the potential for doing things this way, they were very pleased, and we were finding out that a number of districts are looking to add something in the line of robotics for middle school to get that interest going, start the clubs that go along with the class and the after-school programming, and build that interest, build that audience, so that you have no problem filling the classes that you need to fill at the high school level, having a robust program. So, I'm looking to add .5 to get that moving at the middle school level. We're looking to add a .5 special education teacher, that will be covered with the, and that's at Forest Park, will be covered with the CRP grant. We're looking to add two .5 clerks at the elementary level. We currently have two schools that do not have 1.5 clerks, they have one, and the difference is astounding. The need for clerks to handle the work is, I mean, if you ask any of our principals, I'm sure they would find work for a couple more in each building. But I would like to get to a point where we have an equitable rate of this, 1.5 in each elementary school. These are desperately needed at Forest Park and at Fishing Cove. Because of the need to extend the time that our pre-K students have, we're going from a four-day schedule with those students during the week to a five-day schedule, that means that our teachers have a more traditional schedule, similar to a kindergarten teacher, and that means there's more of a traditional need for common planning time, time that they have during the day to prepare their lessons and work with one another to get better, that other teachers are currently afforded in our contract. We were able to get away without that in the past, because we had All Day Friday, where the kids were not coming in and the teachers were doing the work. We cannot do that anymore, so there's a need to address that, and we have found some ways to address that through movement of current itinerant staff from other schools. At the moment, I'm not seeing the same flexibility with music and PE to cover that, so I would need .4 between those two. And we are looking for a part-time clerk, paid for, out of grant money, again, for the pupil personnel office. As I mentioned to you, when we proposed this over a year ago, when we moved to the Davisville building, that we would be looking to enhance the Davisville Academy with a few different positions. One of them is the need for a nurse. Every building has a school nurse, and this would be no exception, we would need a nurse for this building. We would need a clerk for this building, because right now, the programs are situated in schools, there's not so much of a need for a clerk. We would be looking at a reallocation of funds. We currently have $250,000 in funding going to an outsourced program that includes two social workers and a clinical psychologist. We would reorganize that, not use that money for that purpose, and instead, hire a social worker who would be a day-by-day program supervisor for that program. The program would be overseen by the Assistant Director of Special Education, but that person has a number of other duties district-wide. This person would be a day-to-day presence, every day, work almost like a dean at the high school, that oversees the day-to-day operations of the program, meets with parents, talks with kids when they're not, you know, doing what they need to do in classes and that sort of thing. And that's just simply a reallocation of the kind of money that we're using for the outsourced program. And the other piece of that would be a .5 school psychologist, half of which would be paid for out of special education grant money, and half would be covered from the district. When you put all of that together, we have basically added all of the staff that we would need at Davisville Academy and continue to maintain all of our schools without asking for one dime more of operational money in next year's budget. You know, and I, like I said when I started, I appreciate the input that I've already had from a number of you on these issues. I've given you an earlier draft of this about two weeks ago, many of you have gotten back to me. I've tried to be responsive with some of your requests and some of the things that you would like to see, and I think we've had a lot of very creative kinds of conversations about how to do the kinds of things we're looking to achieve, but not extend the budget in doing it. And that's where we are to start. So, I'm going to leave it there for now, thank you.
And actually, the changes that you see here, I wanna clarify, are not reflected in the budget that you have in front of you. So, there's the original spreadsheet like this that Dr. Ogier sent to everyone was about $120,000-some. So, we're looking at about a $100,000 decrease when we adjust for the state aid to the numbers that you have in front of you. Just wanna clarify that.
So, basically, if you wanna make the adjustment, it would be on page 20, the second line, that the request is, the difference from FY14 is $1,516,977, and that difference, instead of 3.57% increase, I am proposing a 3.35% increase to North Kingston taxpayers.
Mrs. O'Bea.
Yeah, I don't have anything too specific yet, because I know this is the beginning of the conversation. I just wanna thank Mary for this budget presentation, because, like I said last year, this is so organized, so clear, so much better than what we had, you know, in the past, and now we've got a format in place that we can follow every year, and this is just, this is great for us, and tabbed, and it's just very easy to use. So, I also wanna recognize Dr. Ogier for, you know, making cuts before he proposed the budget. I almost wanted you to wait, and so then, you know, we could, you can illustrate that we responded over the last week or two to you with some concerns or questions about different ads, and you have already tailored the budget and reorganized some things, so I definitely appreciate that. Couple of, just quick, real quick comments on the major points that you made in the beginning that you wanna look at doing in the future. Capital funding is something we definitely have to get into a conversation about as a community, with the town and the school side, because there are concerns over bonds, bonding constantly on these things and our level of bonds that we're at, and yet, we don't have the funding for the capital reserve every year the way we used to, where the town council years ago, many, many years ago, had a resolution whereby they allocated about, I don't know what it was, half, Bill, was it like $500,000 a year, Bill, in that resolution? So, we need to talk about a way of doing that, probably without bonds, it probably makes sense. And when I look at your projections for our capital account at the end of, is it fiscal year '14 or '15, down to like $64,000 after we fix all the roofs and spend the funds that we have in there now, it's a concern that we keep that, keep our buildings up. Related to that, Phil, the discussion about consolidating schools and looking at our town in a more comprehensive way, long-term planning, you know, for years, Mr. Cerise has been saying, let's think about, he would say, well, what if we, you know, made one middle school, and it was a green school, and had one school close the two middle schools and maybe consolidate the elementary schools? And I told him to be quiet, because I didn't wanna talk about that, because that will be, you know, very labor-intensive for all of us, the whole community will have to be a part of that kind of long-term planning, but it is something that we need to start talking about, those kinds of things, because to keep up all these facilities as they age, we need to start that kind of discussion and planning. One specific question, and I'll have more later, but this is kind of a crazy one, but it just, in terms of the Portuguese and the German classes, I'm sure you looked at the numbers, were there more numbers, were there higher participation in German than Portuguese, Phil?
There's currently more students enrolled in Portuguese than in German. I just felt, as I mentioned, that there's more of a similarity between Portuguese and Spanish, and I'm trying to be cognizant of keeping enough of a variety of options. That's why I, it's not anything to slight anyone with an interest in Portuguese or the Portuguese people or the Portuguese country, it's just a matter of having variety for the school.
Thank you, I'll have more comments later.
I remember last year, we did receive a number of emails from the URI program about the German studies, because it ties in directly with their engineering program that they already have down at URI, and they pair up with companies in Germany, and so, that was one of the things that URI was encouraging us to keep, our German, because it tied in with what they were already doing down there. So, I'm sure that everybody has something they wanna comment on, and what I would propose is that if everybody wants to take a brief comment, you know, right now, we have about 35 minutes before we need to wrap up here, so if you want to talk about the general direction, but we can't get in real in-depth in our questions at this point. Mr. Cerise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, as you said, just wanna make a couple of quick comments, and hopefully, if my colleagues and the superintendent and Mrs. King could make a note or a mental note, and then hopefully, these are things we can certainly get back to at another meeting, but just kind of to give some thought to as we move forward in the budget process. First, going back to page 20 in our budget, it's not rocket science, but I think it does need to be pointed out, if you look at FY11 under revenues, grant funds, you notice that the district received approximately $4.2 million in grant funding that year. As you follow that line across to the right, as the years progress, projected for $1.7 million, that grant funding has gone down each year, obviously, from the federal and state level. So, that leaves the school district with, leaves all school districts with basically two options. You either make the elimination of those programs, services, and staff that was funded through federal and state grants, or you look to pass the cost on to the local taxpayers. So, again, I'm not saying anything that's not simple to see and simple to understand, but I do think that people need to be cognizant of it and look at how that's progressed over the years, and I think we'll continue to see that progress, trend downward, will leave more of an impact on the local communities. So, I think we need to continually keep that in mind. The other comments I wanted to make is, I think, based on what the superintendent has said, and it kinda goes back to some of the concerns that were raised in the electives, and I would think that the recommendations he's made at this time, although we haven't voted on them, they would voted on them, they will be reflective or considered as we move forward with the program of studies. I believe it was the Portuguese one, and if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Ogier, did you say Fit for Life was the other?
I use a PE section, and, you know, right now, I would look to target that particular class, but I think I would like just the enrollment process to play out. I mean, if that, generally speaking, that is something that does get enrolled pretty well, and if it ends up beating something else out, well, fine.
The other comment I had was the teacher assistant proposal to be added at Stony Lane. As far as comments, it's noted special ed need at Stony Lane. Not looking for it tonight, but as we move forward in the budget process, just looking for a little bit more information to justify that additional staff and that additional expenditure. I see the one below it for Forest Park is specific to a program that, I guess, Forest Park Elementary School houses. So again, I don't need any answer or information tonight, but just a little bit more descriptive in that. Maybe we can get that from the Special Education Department or from that school themselves.
We can do that.
And I just, again, I think it's important to point out, as Mrs. King mentioned earlier, the, I probably don't have my numbers right, but I would estimate $700,000 to $800,000 annual jump that we would see as part of our healthcare cost increases. Every year, that comes with the increased cost that are passed on to us from our healthcare providers. Not seeing that, although it's a projection and an estimate at this point, but not seeing that in next year's number as a result of the work done by the administration and the school committee and collaboration with the teachers, Teachers Bargaining Unit, and making the changes that we made to the healthcare model. So again, I think it's obviously worth pointing out, and thank you.
I just want to say I'm, you know, happy to see us sticking with the same format. It makes it, you know, easy to read and follow, and the fact that we're adding additional information to make it more user-friendly as we go along. With regard to comments presently on the budget, I'm going to abstain from that because I'm going to direct my questions to Dr. Ogier and Ms. King so that I can get those answers before I make further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Yeah, real quick, in the interest of time, I will say, for Dr. Ogier, Ms. King, you know, the initiative on the financial transparency and user-friendly, you know, I appreciate starting to make an effort on that. I know it's something the Budget Subcommittee worked, and hopefully, you know, it was never intended to become an onerous add at this point, but hopefully, as we keep working on it over the next six months, it becomes something we can implement fully for the next budget cycle, to clarify that. I just want to point out a couple things, probably something for the community to understand, and maybe an issue for us as a committee to perhaps talk with our town council and other folks about, and maybe Dr. Ogier at his level to talk with his appropriate counterparts and others. If you look at one of the big changes over the last two years is our expenses with charter schools. You know, one school in particular, we've gone from basically 200, a little under $300,000 a couple of years ago to a projection of over $600,000 in two years. That's 300,000 to one school, where we don't get really any offsets because, and that's their state aid as well, because there are one and two students from across potentially eight different grades and four or five different schools. And what strikes me is, you know, a discussion that these kinds of sudden year-to-year adjustments are impossible to budget for, yet the reality of the expense hits you potentially after your budget's been locked, because the way those schools work is, the lottery may be in March, but the enrollments are fluid through the summer. And I think it's a discussion worth having, again, at appropriate levels, to say, there maybe needs to be some kind of revisiting of that way that system works. And it's not an indictment on charter schools, but, you know, these schools are taking students from schools that are blue-ribbon schools in our district or others. And perhaps the statewide intent of charter schools, I don't think we're necessarily to punish high-performing districts, because that's 300,000 we just have to cut from our existing students. And so, you know, I think it's maybe a discussion, again, Dr. Ogier, at your level with your counterparts of how that system's working, and maybe revisiting if some kind of an agreement can be worked out at your level, but if not, it may be something that we as a committee, with our other committees, with our state association, with our town council, with our General Assembly reps, maybe need to discuss about how to not hurt the point of charter schools, but to minimize the impact on especially high-performing districts. I don't think the community realizes that that's, this year looks like 300,000 that, you know, we just don't have any cut savings for, where if you say, when you have declining enrollment, you can cut here and there. So I kind of wanted to point that out, just so the community's aware, that's another big driver in our budget. And so again, you know, this is a good starting point, and we'll have more discussions. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on that. I agree with you and echo the sentiments, and it's something that this committee's discussed, I think, every budget here for at least the last seven years, and I think we've even taken a vote at times and sent committee correspondents to our state legislators on that specific topic. And, but I certainly am not saying, given they have done that, I would still, would like to continue to pursue the ideas that you have just mentioned, and I think it's an issue that we need to continue to pursue, that it's only growing larger and more urgent as every year passes on. And you're absolutely right. I'm not sure of what the intent is and how you foster those charter schools while at the same times you're not hurting local school districts. You know, I can certainly understand if you had an underachieving on your school district, giving those students and families the opportunity to enroll in a charter school, but when you have a school district such as ours, like you said, that are a high-performing school district, blue-ribbon schools, so on and so forth, and we're taking students from those schools to go to schools that I would say that we outperform at the expense of the local taxpayers and the local school district, and it's detrimental to the local school district, I'm not quite sure I understand who's winning in that situation there. So certainly something that I would definitely like to follow up with you on, Mr. Jones, and thank you for highlighting that again for us.
Mr. Mudge, did you have any brief comments?
Yes, I do. Obviously, we've tried this before with the charter schools, and I think the issue was very simple, which I said before, and we should go back to our legislators again. I personally believe that we should have legislation put in, if not for the rest of the state, for North Kingstown, to give the option, or to give the options to high-performing districts, that they don't have to send their kids to charter schools. To me, that's, you know, it's just crazy, what we're doing, because we're taking money away from our, the general ed kids in our district. And I've put all kinds of numbers together in the past, and I think we ought to send a letter out again and say, let's have a hearing, and give, you know, and look at this thing, because certainly, when this thing really, you know, came about, it wasn't to penalize performing school districts, and I do support charter schools for non-performing districts. But anyway, what I'd like to know is, with respect to this budget, are there any mandatory or mandates from the School Department of Education that are drivers in the fiscal year '15 budget? And if so, I'd like to find out what they are. Mandates, in other words, from what we're doing today, next year, what are the mandates? I would also like to address the fact that I think we need more information on our grant funding, although we ought to recognize that grant funding is not part of this submission. Okay, this is only the general fund part of the budget, and we need to get some more information on, and details on our grant funding issues. Incidentally, I think from a homework standpoint, that we're obligated to, in fact, include each one of these, including enterprise ones, in our budget submission to the town council. That's not a mere formality, that's a legal requirement we have, which we have not done in the past. We need to approve each of those and send it to the council. With respect to the capital investment, I would ask that, and bonding, that we make some clarification on where we're going here, because I don't think that the council's ever rejected a budget that we've had for specific maintenance items. And I think what we need to do in our budget is be more specific in terms of not replacing an air conditioning unit, you know, three years from now or one year from now, because I haven't seen anything in our budget, or the council refused to give us any information when we came in or didn't come in, or the absence of coming in, that we weren't doing our preventive maintenance. And I would ask if there is something that we need in this budget, in addition to what's been discussed, and it's related to not doing day-to-day maintenance, I would like you to identify. Now, if it's long-term maintenance, it's a separate issue, but to go back and say the council hasn't funded us, and I've heard this in other discussions on the districts and everything else, is, yes, the council has a requirement to help us with the long-term capital funding, but we're responsible to do the day-to-day maintenance, and if we don't do the day-to-day maintenance, then we do turn into a condition that we have, you know, major, you know, facility problems. Therefore, it's incumbent upon us to ensure that we're doing our maintenance. So I'd like the superintendent to look back at the maintenance program and tell us, provide us with any information with regards to what we cannot do with this budget from a maintenance standpoint.
Mr. Mudge, I'd like to address a couple of your points. First of all, I will get back to you with issues that are affected by mandates, grant funding concerns. The capital investment piece that I suggested at the beginning, and is in my opening narrative in the budget, is not about that regular maintenance piece. And I agree with you 100% that we need to be more specific. And to give, you know, respect where respect is due, you know, we did talk to the town council about helping us with the Davisville Academy piece, that is a major capital item, and they have come through. And I think it's important to identify the specific things we have in mind, not simply to give them a copy of the capital plan and say, we're going to try to get to some of this stuff down the road. But, you know, I think there's got, there's got to be a little bit of both, that there's a funded plan that we can count on from year to year, but each year, there's also a mention of the specific kinds of things we would like to use, specific dollar amounts to handle. And I'm not talking about day-to-day maintenance, I'm talking about those long-term capital project-type items, some of them as big as, you know, replacing, you know, or updating the HVAC in this high school, those kinds of things, not replacing one air conditioner.
I'm going to jump in because I know that we could spend a lot more time talking about this, but we are at 20 minutes, and we have a few things we have to get done. I mean, it is unfortunate that we had snow last week that has pushed our schedule such that we are at the end of the month, and there are a few things we need to take care of tonight. So I'm going to ask the committee--
Can I make one statement, comment, please?
No, I'm going to bring us back to the agenda, to the things that we haven't covered, and I would say, write your things down, we meet next week again, and we can devote more time, we put hardly anything else except for budget on the meeting next week. So that'll give us the chance to get together, have a full conversation, rather than bringing up one more thing and not being able to address it. So I apologize for having to cut people off, I really did not want to do that, but we have started running late, and so I feel like I need to guide the committee through the remainder of the agenda.
You know, Madam Chairman, I found it really just terrible. We have one month--
I'm sorry, Mr.--
We have one month to come up with a $65 million budget--
And I didn't want to create the snow last week, Mr. Mudge.
The town council, I understand, but the town council gets two months? We need to go to the council and get some relief or something, because this is crazy. You know, we get six weeks or something to come up with a budget which, you know, it has all kinds of ramifications--
I agree.
Okay, it's just, just crazy.
It does make us all frustrated, Mr. Mudge, I concede that.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going back to item B, the approval of the high school program of studies. Do I have a motion? What do we want to do? You've heard Dr. Ogier's proposal of some of the cuts he is proposing. What does the committee want to do?
What's going to be changed?
The two things being changed, if I'm correct, are elimination of Portuguese 1 and elimination of Point 2 PE.
And then there's also the Point 8 in electives.
Okay, are we able to make further, well, once it's printed, are we able to make further changes to that?
If, yes, any changes that you make, I mean, it's a long process, and I've been involved in this many years in my former job as well, and it's just a matter of, you know, getting the word out, whether it's some kind of an addendum to the program of studies to say the following things will not run, or, you know, getting the word to the middle schools, there's a long process here, so it's not a problem.
Mr. Jones?
I know we have time, so I'll just make this point. Since this is something we do every year, and apparently it's gotten more attention this year from the committee, I would just make the point that we start this conversation earlier next year by getting this. I know we had the snow day, we lost, but we know when this needs to be approved, we should backdate and back-plan accordingly and maybe start this process earlier.
Yes, and time we pay attention to the course of studies, we've done a lot of changes in the past, in the past years, years ago.
We also, you know, not to belabor the point, but we also delayed a meeting to give people more time to look at it, so, but we'll set it up as early as December to make sure we definitely meet the deadlines we need to make. Not a problem.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the program of studies. Thank you, Mrs. Clarkin, do I have a second?
Second. I have a second.
As modified by what was said tonight, though.
Yes.
So that a motion is--
Whatever it was.
Approve with the modifications already made, whatever they were, and the potential modifications--
Want me to revise my motion?
I recommend it.
Go ahead, Larry.
Your motion was a motion to approve with the stated modifications.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Alvin W., your second, then.
You did, but I'd like to give it to Mr. Cerise.
Good, Mr. Cerise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I concur with Mrs. Clarkin, I would like to make sure that we are clear that it is with the modifications that the superintendent recommended tonight, and if there are no objections with the, I know it's verbally made clear to the students when they're, when they are choosing their electives, but if we could put some type of language in the foreword of the program of studies that makes it crystal clear to them that obviously if our enrollment does not meet whatever the criteria is going to be, that the courses are going to run, so I would feel a lot better about that. And I think, depending on how the budget process plays out, as Dr. Penrith knows and Dr. Ogier knows, we might need to come back to that, so, but I think that's a good menu start at this point.
I think that's a good, good menu start at this point, so.
All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no hands, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, that brings us to personnel items. Do I have a motion to approve the transfer and the appointment?
Motion to approve the transfer and the appointment.
Do you have any further questions?
Um, okay, that's okay.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to policy IKF. This is a revision to the graduation policy, um, and what this adds is the Department of Education is requiring us to have a waiver procedure, and so they have, um, given each school district, uh, a specified listing of how this is to be worded and how it is to be written within your, your policy, and we have pretty much followed that advisory from the Department of Education with the additions of what we have in our own policy to make sure that our course of studies is in there as we have it listed. But other than that, um, the Department of Education has asked that this waiver be placed in every school by the end of January. So, um, I'm looking for a motion, and then we'll have discussion. Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have discussed this, um, at least two of our policy meetings to get where we are now. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Ken, and I want to thank Dr. Kenworthy, because I know a lot of, um, back and forth and effort went into the revision. That's all.
All right, seeing- Yes, Mr. Mudge.
What is so important about getting this thing out immediately? I mean, I don't think we've had enough time to, at least I haven't, to digest the, the, the impact of, uh, this matter, and, you know, especially when we look at the, uh, the ongoing, what's happening here about some kids can get a diploma if they are eligible for a diploma if they go to school expert, if they went, for example, you know, Rhode Island College or something, they're, they can't get a diploma. I mean, my lord. I mean, it, it, what's, what's, what's happening here? I, I don't understand this. I truly don't understand what's, what's happening, and-
Dr. Kenworthy is here, and you can explain the nuance that you're, because it's a little bit, what you've said is not entirely what the Department of Education has said, so, Dr. Kenworthy, why do you-
Sure, so as quickly as I can, um, and all that is worked into the guidance that's, that's there, Mr. Mudge, in the new policy, and, you know, some of it is extensive, so there's links to, you know, where the items go on for pages on the Department of Ed website within the policy. To your question about why, you know, what's the push to get this in place by the end of January, which is the guidance that all districts have received from the Department of Education, because we're just about to release, we, we have the scores, and we're able to publicly release them soon for our seniors, starting with our seniors who had to take the kneecap retake, and, and where they stand as to how that applies to their graduation requirements. And so, what's going to happen is the students who, who didn't make the cut either this time on the kneecap or wanted the approved alternate test, they'll have one more shot, okay, coming up in the next few months, and then, you know, what this policy lays down is that then there is a waiver that they can apply for, and the waiver is not just a guaranteed, they apply and they get it, but it, this policy, you know, we follow the guidance that was set out by the Department of Education, puts the processes in place that students and their families can apply for the waiver, so I think in that regard it's important that, that it's in place, so that we can, you know, have that waiver policy ready to go for the students and their families who are going to need to use it. And then, you know, the, the piece which was the latest to come down, it, it's open versus non-open enrollment colleges, so the, the difference would be basically, you know, C-C-R-I, Community College, is open enrollment, so, you know, any student, as long as they have a high school diploma in, in hand, can, can apply, take courses at the Community College around. The, the latest change that they put in to that can be factored into the waiver policy if a student is accepted into a non-open enrollment college, there's some sort of competitive process, and if that college was willing to accept them, then that can grant an automatic waiver to them.
I was under the impression that we could establish our own criteria as well.
We can add to what the minimum, uh, requirements there were in, in the RIDE policy.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I, I didn't look at the RIDE, I hadn't seen the RIDE policy and looked at it, so I, I'm a remiss if, if I missed that, but when was that policy promulgated by RIDE?
I mean, versions of it have been in place-
Just last year.
For, yeah, for, I was going to say a couple of years, and, uh, and again, at the beginning of this year, they sent out some guidance, you know, I attended different forums, as I'm sure Dr. O'Jay, Dr. Hornet-
I'm not sure, I saw, saw that guidance, I, I don't know, it's probably maybe my fault, but, uh, where can I get what's actually the guidance that we're looking at and addressing in this vote? Is there one place in the RIDE website, or did you send me the RIDE website to show that?
Yeah, I can send it to you, um, you know, I, I think there, there are, you know, links there around graduation, um, requirements and policies.
Things don't seem fluid to me. They're changing all the time.
There is a lot, yeah, there's a lot happening, but, um-
And, and I want to make sure that I know what exactly that the rules and regs are today.
Sure. I think, though, the best answer to your question is, so why we have to have this in place now is so our students and their families who may need to apply for the waiver can do so.
Dr. Kenworthy, excuse me, may I ask a quick question?
I'd still be sitting in high school if they had all these requirements backed down, so.
Look, this is my concern, and correct me if I'm wrong on, on this regulation. In open enrollment schools such as C-C-R-I, they don't, there's no possibility of waiver? Is that, am I wrong on that?
No, but, and, and, you know, I'm certainly not the expert on this, but I also think it's, a student also can't get into C-C-R-I without at least a high school diploma or a GED.
So, but they can't waive the kneecap because, so they will, so potentially they won't be able to get their diploma if they can't waive the kneecap.
Right, C-C-R-I won't accept them anyway without a high school diploma or a GED, so it's kind of-
I don't know if I fully understand it either, or if I even support it, but I-
Yeah.
RIDE's telling us we have to vote on it by X date, so.
What it does allow us is that if we have other tests other than just the kneecap that we can give students, and we can say, if you've passed this, remember, it's not necessarily that you even get a, um, more than a one on the kneecap, it's that you, the, from the first time you take the kneecap to the second time, you show improvement.
Demonstrated growth. We already have, I, I think the other thing, and, and, you know, it's too bad we, we almost couldn't have released this information, so you're going to see some very positive news when we can release, you know, where our current seniors stand. Um, you know, that being said, we'll still have some, some students and families that have to explore the rest of the options that are in front of them, one of them being, we want them to make sure they have that waiver option to apply for.
But we're, but we're ultimately going to be responsible to make that decision, whether the, the student gets his diploma or not.
Right, we get to make the final decision, that is a local decision-
We, the school committee.
Right, the school department, school committee, right, final say, but we, we have to, what this policy lays out for us is the process that those students and families can follow, specifically, and this is just specifically around the kneecap requirement. So, and there's a lot of other things, you know, that go into graduation requirements.
You'll get twenty-four credits?
Right, so.
Okay, so is that sufficient for us to, you know, to graduate? The kids get twenty-four credits? Can we, can we set, not that I'm suggesting we do this, but under this guidance, can, can we make that our, our, uh, uh, requirement to graduate?
And, and leave out the other things like kneecap?
Yeah.
No, there are. So, it's a, it's a minimum credit requirement, state assessment requirement, and two additional proficiency-based requirements, that's where we have, our version of that would be senior project and E-portfolio.
Um, I just want to clarify one thing, Mr. Mudge, um, you mentioned the school committee makes that decision, that the, the policies of the state are that the superintendent would make that decision. If there's an appeal of that, it will come to the school committee, but that's a superintendent decision.
Maybe I missed it, that's, uh, Dr. O'Jay, I will say that I'm not up to speed on all the, the, the legislation here and what's going on, but, you know, you, which, what you read in the papers, it's just beautiful.
Things are happening fast.
Yeah, absolutely, and, uh, you know, I'm concerned about that, and it seems like that everything's going in circles in this education system in Rhode Island.
I, I think the good news for us is we'll have some positive news, uh, on that front in, within the next few weeks, uh, and we, we still have other opportunities that our students can take advantage of if they need to, um, around the kneecap requirement, but including, I think, you know, my advocate here would be that we want to make sure they have that waiver, uh, process to use if, if needed as well, so that's what this will ensure.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? Great, all those in favor of passing IKF, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm going to abstain, I just don't have enough to, information about on.
Motion passes. Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda and gives Christian twenty minutes to clean up here, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Thank you very much, everyone, see you next week.